We can start. I will officially call the Board of Selectment's special meeting for March 24th to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions. All rise, please.
The Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we'll begin with public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Yes?
Bill Koch, 26 Wickham Drive. It appears that both the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen have placed many items in the capital budget in hope that it sticks. If the governing boards were interested in reducing the mill rate, this budget should not go forward, for many of the items are not projects that have been defined as capital projects, but a wish list of items under the rate of approval by, not by referendum vote, since they fall under the 1 percent guideline for taxpayer approval. Many of the items were placed in this year's budget without going through the process of yearly review. All the projects that have asterisks should be rejected as inconsistent with the Board of Finance's concern on throwing capital items in the budget at the final hour without the appropriate vetting. This leads to short-sighted, long-term planning, and usually tries to placate a vocal lobby group with unrealistic expenditures. One of the things you have is the golf course improvements. The golf course improvements, you've been improving the golf course, and they're still losing money. So I don't think that that asterisk item, I don't think any of them should be in, but that's absurd. Then you have the technology infrastructure. That too should be eliminated. And all these are little tiny items. Alternate energy efficiency projects, that's another one that should be eliminated. The Board of Education has, not that the others shouldn't be scrutinized, they have the alternate B, Henry James Interior Hallway Improvements versus block asterisk should be taken out. Simsbury High School Turf Field Synthetic Track Maintenance. Since when is maintenance part of capital expenditures? Squadron Line Main Office Project. They, and that's also thrown in. How come all of a sudden they didn't know that they had an office project? And Payne Boat House Roof Replacement. If Mr. Payne has bought a boat house, then he should fix his own roof. I'm just kidding. But I think that the crew team should pay for that expenditure, because it's part of crew. And my son was on the crew team, and they, everything we needed, we paid for. The parents of the crew team paid for it. So if they want a nice roof, they should pay for it. And I just think you ought to scrutinize this, because every expenditure we have increases the mill rate, doesn't reduce it for sure. So I think you have to really think hard and fast about what you're doing. And all the projects should go to referendum for taxpayer approval. Having the Board of Finance approve small projects that incumbent the taxpayer and add up to six-figure expenditures should not be approved as a capital project, but incorporated into the operating budgets or capital non-recurring. This move to economics will eventually make the town non-competitive in a buyer's market. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Robert Kalishman. Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. I wasn't going to come today, but I heard some rumors, and I thought I'd make an appearance. We came, we sat. I think I attended all the budget meetings, most of them. And you made some very arduous decisions, tough decisions. We didn't get the full-time policeman that I was looking for. You're using a smoke and a mirror to pay for whatever you're going to end up with. But you're not being fair with the people once again. I know what you're doing. Smoke and mirrors, you're going to take a policeman, and you're going to put him up in the school for nine months out of the year, and you're going to say, "Look what we done for you." The people in town need the extra police, and that's what we should add. One full-time policeman. And stop using smoke and mirrors. And now I notice that you're starting to back things in, that you've taken off your taxes, but now you're backing them back in with this capital funding. You're going with money. You sat here, and you impressed everybody with, "Well, we're going to make some hard decisions on parking and rec." What did you do? You put all the money in the back. You gave back the money for the golf course. You gave back all that money. We're going up to here to placate a voting block in Terrifil. What are we doing up there? You're going to go in with a quarter of a million dollars for the loop. We don't need it up there. That property is a gorge, and it abuts state property. And what are we assuming? Why are the taxpayers of Simsbury assuming the responsibility for Connecticut? For Selectwoman, you know what's going to happen with these trails. Just so it's happening now. Steve Mitchell stood here, took out his wallet, said, "Here, this is what it's all about." Meaning, money, we improved the trails with the bikes. We're going to bring all that revenue into Simsbury. I haven't seen any. We have a businessman that sits on this board, Mr. Payne. Have you seen any increase in your business? I haven't. And the point I'm trying to make to you is, here we are, the taxpayer in Simsbury is paying for the trails, and everybody in Connecticut is riding them. And the businesses aren't making a nickel, so we're not making any more tax money. So why don't we give it back to the state, or let the state assume the responsibility for the trails? That's their, and the property abuts the state. Send an emissary down to the state. Ask them, "Will you meet us halfway? Will you pay for everything?" Maybe they will. But I don't think the people of Simsbury, West Simsbury or whatever, should be paying for the people in Terrifil to have a loop, which is going to benefit all the bike riders that come to Connecticut. Don't pay one nickel in taxes. Enjoy our bikes, trails. We get the expense, they get the enjoyment, and off they go. And that's the only thing I'm saying is, you're coming with this capital improvement thing, you're starting to use angles. When you start to use angles, you're going to end up in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll begin tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the budget, to propose to the Board of Finance and to the taxpayers of Simsbury, which ultimately have the decision as to whether to approve the referendum or not. Just to review, the charter, the charter requires that the Board of Selectmen forward to the Board of Finance no later than March 31st, the Board of Selectmen budget and also the capital plan. As you know, we had hoped to adopt the budget tonight, so we could accommodate the Board of Finance, which has scheduled a meeting for tomorrow night. But per charter, we are obligated to submit our budget by March 31st. So we just wanted to review those requirements. We are well within the timeframe that's required by law. So I thank the board for all their hard work and all the special meetings that you've participated in. This evening, I thought what we would do is ask Sean to recap the budget. Just to recall, the budget that I submitted to the board was a 1.57% increase. That included some additions and deletions from what we've currently discussed. We had, Department had presentations. I want to thank our staff for all the hard work in presenting the information to our board, and also for answering questions and providing information. The board then had a consensus that there were a number of items that they wanted to add back to the First Selectmen's budget, and that would bring the Board of Selectmen's budget up to 2.2%. I thought what I would do tonight is ask Sean Kimble to basically review, just so we have an understanding of what we had a consensus on, and then we'll begin discussion. Is everybody comfortable with that process? Okay, great. Thanks, Sean. So if you could just start by reviewing where we are to date.
Okay, sure. So I believe consensus, and we roll forward the wish list. Total budget to 2.20%. Again, as the Board of Finance reaffirmed for us last week, they, after an analysis of the contractual settlements that we paid out in the current fiscal year, they're willing, they're considering our budget, which was really a 1.07% budget, given that, an increase of $205,000 that was part of the contractual settlements from last year. So what we have included, and we have a copy of, does anyone have a copy of the wish list that's forwarded out of our files?
Actually, I didn't. Do you have an extra one?
Sure.
I thought I had stuck it in here.
I'm going to do that.
Thank you.
I have one for five, too.
Absolutely. So if you, if you. All right, so, okay, motions.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, so, but what we have, so basically, as compared to the First Selectmen's original budget, we've made a number of changes, I believe, through consensus, going back to, we originally had a proposed police officer position that was cut, that was restored per the board's direction, with some additional trade-off cuts that were implemented. What I could probably do, maybe the simplest, Mary, would just be go down the list of those changes from your original proposed budget.
That would be helpful.
That's fine. There's been a number of wish lists in the middle.
Yeah. So that's why I think it's important, we just go through what the budget includes.
Sure. So at the moment, when compared to the First Selectmen's proposed budget from the end of February, there's been $9,500 added back to the central admin part-time budget. There's been $2,000 reduced from the central admin advertising budget.
Do you have a copy?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll make a few extra copies for everyone.
You should write that down, that thing.
Sean, do you have that PowerPoint that had the original budget on it? So then, maybe we could see that, and then, then we can all see what's next, you know? Maybe that would be helpful for the people in the.
If we could get extra copies for everyone in the public that wants them to that degree.
That'd be great. Do you have a copy?
If you want to do something to the press, I'll just say.
Sorry, everybody, hold on. Go to finance.
The document you have right now, though, really does summarize virtually every change, as the first town staff understood it from that first budget, and that's essentially the motions that Sean's drafted are motions that are adjusting the First Selectmen's original proposed budget.
And this is not new documents. This is, this is what the board had consensus on.
Exactly.
So maybe we could just go through, while we're waiting for the list, and we just go through the numbers. And everyone will have a copy, so why don't we just get started? And if you can put it on, people can follow on the overhead as well.
All right. All right, so do you want me to wait till it's on the screen, or?
Oh, yeah.
All right, just give us a second.
Folks who need a copy, just if you could just raise your hand, that'd be great. Two here. That's it. Thank you.
Sorry about that. It's quite all right. All right, so what this does is summarize all of the changes that have been made, both back and forth from where we ended up here at the 2.2 budget, when compared to Mary's original First Selectmen presented budget. The total budget would be $18,751,363. This includes $9,500 added back to the central admin part-time budget, $2,000 reduced from the central administration advertising budget, $1,160 reduced from the Board of Selectmen Public Agency Support line item, $5,000 added to the Economic Development Public Agency, I should say, support. Reduced from, let's see, $7,000 reduced from the Economic Development Advertising line item, $2,000 reduced from Tourism, Tech and Program Supplies, $635 added to the Assessors' Office Payroll line item, $7,000 added to Community Development Contractual Services, $80,735 added back to the Police Department Full-Time Payroll line item, $9,500 for part-time payroll in the Police Department, $4,641 added to Police Department Holiday Pay line item, $1,150 added to the Police Department Collective Marketing line item, that's the uniform pay for the local police officer, $20,000 added to the Buildings and Maintenance Administration Full-Time Payroll line item, $18,000 reduced from Landfill Facilities Maintenance, $7,089 reduced from Library Children's Services Full-Time Payroll, $2,911 reduced from Library Children's Services Part-Time Payroll, $18,000 added to Employee Benefit Social Security, and $610 added to the FY 2015 Capital Nonrecurring Charge.
And just clarification, Sean. The added back to the Police Department part-time payroll, is that for the records clerk, but it's in the payroll account, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
The part-time records clerk comes out of the part-time payroll.
Any questions? Just clarification. The first item, the $9,500, that's the communications position? Yes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, just also some, I guess, more clarification on the $5,000 added for Economic Development Public Agency Support. So is that the bringing Main Street from $40,000 to $45,000?
That is correct. The $5,000, yes. That $5,000 is, is the line item that Main Street comes out of, yes.
So where's the other $5,000?
So the other $5,000 is...
That's the $7,000.
Sorry, you're talking about for the EDC marketing plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just on your memo.
That should have been $5,000. So I'm wondering if that $7,000 is supposed to be an ad.
No, that $7,000, the line item that the EDC marketing study comes out of, is $7,000 added to Community Development Contractual Services.
The $7,000 added to Community Development.
That's what I meant. Why is that $7,000?
Added from your proposed budget. It was $2,000, there was $5,000 for that, and then you, at the last meeting, you moved $2,000 from Tourism.
That's right.
That was $2,700.
So it was just a line item change.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm confused. On the memo you sent to us, the total for Economic Development Marketing Study is $30,000, you said, but this makes it look like it's $32,000.
The marketing study.
No, it was moved. We moved the website from one account to another account.
That's the only line item in that.
So in terms of the economic development, it's $45,000 for Main Street, $4,000 for the Communications Association, $200 for supplies, $30,000 for time commission, $30,000 for economic development marketing study.
Correct.
And $25,000 in the capital improvement plan for the multi-use trail.
Correct.
So with the $7,000 move from EDC to the communications, and $2,000 from tourism to EDC, but that's incorporated in the $30,000. It's not 30, we're not over, we're not funding them more than they asked.
Correct.
Right, that's right.
So $30,000 total.
$2,000 of that $5,000 line item is not additional money, it's just a transfer from a different line item.
To make up to the 30. So there's, right?
That brings the total to 32.
No, not for that, but the $2,000, well, the two, my understanding is that the, the study was, we gave an additional, they only asked for 30, so we can't give them 32, because we'd be giving them more money than they asked for.
I'm glad you asked that, because I was hearing the same thing when I was reading.
No, what happened was, we added, we transferred the Tourism.
The problem is, we don't have anything in writing. And we don't really have a plan. And we're operating good faith. We sent it to the EDC, we still haven't got anything yet. So we really can't appropriate them. We really can't let them spend the money until we have a plan. But what we did say is, all these pieces shouldn't be operated separately. And then Tourism had a website, and a video, and EDC had a video, Main Street had a video.
The idea was to combine.
And the idea was to move the money, $2,000 out of Tourism.
We rolled the $2,000 back up to EDC.
Back into EDC, but not to increase the marketing plan to 30,000.
No, the $5,000 was making it whole at 30.
Right.
And the $2,000 is getting rolled up from Tourism into EDC, because EDC's doing.
As part of that 30,000.
For the video.
Because they're going to do the video now.
Not for the tourism.
So, so the Economic Development Task Force is 30? Do we all agree with that?
Yeah. But they're doing the extra work for the video.
For the study, right.
No, but the video is something, they don't do the video, they can't spend $32,000 in the marketing study.
That's right.
The video money, if you don't spend, it goes back. I mean, I don't really like doing things this way, because you don't have a plan. So I think before we, you know, before we spend any of the money, really aren't going to release them, so we have a plan. But we did say, we wanted the funding for the $2,000 to go towards a video. So if that video's not done, that money goes back to the video.
Correct.
Or goes back to the video.
That's what we had talked about.
That was my understanding.
Part of this is an add-back, part of this is a move.
A transfer.
And that's why it adds up to $7,000.
And moving the responsibility with it.
Okay. But the total for the Economic Development Task Force, which includes the making of a $2,000 video, is $30,000? Is that consensus?
Well, we are, there's $2,000 appropriated for the video, $30,000 for the plan, no money's to be spent until we have a plan.
So you're saying there is now $32,000 in the Economic Development Task Force?
No, not that.
The line item's not called a task force, it's called contractual service. There's no line item called task force.
In the budget, the Economic Development Commission, under the purview of Hiram's Office, will have oversight over a total of, I think, $88,000. And right now, because we don't have any paper, the way we understand it is $45,000 will go to Main Street, $30,000 will go towards a plan, a study of some kind, and $2,000 will be used for the video. But they have to, the EDC has to come to us with a plan before we can work.
Or at least.
It's exactly what you see on the earlier agenda items.
I don't see $2,000.
Because that was some transfer, line item transfer, it's not additional money. It's showing up here, because it has to be a change from the budget that the First Selectmen have amended. So it has to show up on our budget in order to be in the right place. But there's no $2,000, there's not $2,000 more, it's just moved.
Okay, so it's just under the authority of the.
Right, in an attempt to coordinate everything, so we don't have people doing different things, and there's nothing, again, in writing. We needed to have control over it, so we put it all in one line item, and then we'll get a plan before we disperse it. And if there's no plan, then no money gets spent.
That sounds like a plan.
It's a plan.
And I have to stress that, you know, I really expect to see something in writing before I would support and release the money. Any questions on any of the other line items? Okay, so if the board's comfortable with the consensus, and comfortable with the numbers, then we would need to make a motion to approve the operating budget in the amount of $18,751,363, with the following changes that we just read into the record. And that would be the motion for the budget. We also do have special revenue funds and other additional motions, but that would take care of the budget, the motion for the budget. Yes?
What was the final decision on the Board of Ed? They were contemplating paying for half the police position since.
So we had asked the Board of Ed to fund $40,000 of the police officer. We represented that to the Board of Finance, and we did represent that to the Board of Ed. And my understanding is, the Board of Ed didn't take action on it, but it does have a meeting tomorrow night, so I can't answer that question tonight.
Okay.
As of tonight, that is the number we have to approve.
Okay.
If I may add, I believe that the, Matt and Burke will be recommending it, but we don't know what they find a decision to make.
So as it stands tonight, this motion is the 18,751,363, but that could be reduced by $40,000 if they were to take action on it. So this is inclusive of that, because we have to fund it at this point.
And that would bring us down to 198, is that right, Sean?
Just about 198.
All right, and the Board of Finance can then deal with that, once the Board of Ed approves it or not.
And we have a public hearing, and we have other, we have a long way to go before the budgets are final. This is, just to give public, the Board of Finance notice of what is included and what's not included in the town budget, and to give the public notice of what they can comment on, and what the number is. But of course, adjustments can be made after the public hearing.
Question, and I'll be quiet, I promise. But just, if you, I just want to make sure you will be very comfortable with these numbers, because this will be the motion that Sean presents in the next meeting, your final approval. So if there are any changes, now would be the time we could know when to adjust.
Somebody added these up, right?
Oh, we did.
Twice.
Just checking.
And Sean, you got the change to report to support. That change was made?
I changed it up here.
Okay, great.
And this will also be the public notice for the public hearing. So this will serve as a basis for public notice for the public hearing. This, this is, this won't be the format, it'll be the entire budget. This is just showing you what we did to the First Selectmen's budget. And all of this information is on the town website, so it's not any new additional information. Yeah.
So I, Sean, ask and make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen 2014-15 operating budget in the amount of $18,751,363, with the following changes from the First Selectmen's proposed budget that we just went through, with the additional change of support to, or report to support.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sold. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. You oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is to make a motion to approve the water pollution control, 2014-15 operating budget in the amount of $2,953,372. This budget, during our budget discussions, was presented, and there were no adjustments made to the budget that was recommended to you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Do we have to read that?
Oh, I have to read it, I'm sorry.
Yes, you have to state your name.
I, Cheryl Cook, make a motion to approve the water pollution control, 2014-2015 operating budget in the amount of $2,953,372.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I, second.
Any questions, any comments? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next item is to approve the residential rental properties operating budget, and that is as recommended. There were no changes based on the recommended budgets. Is there a motion?
I, Nancy Hassy, make a motion to approve the residential rental properties, 2014-2015 operating budget in the amount of $48,230.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next item is to approve the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund operating budgets, and I need a motion to adopt that.
I'll make that motion. I, Michael Payne, make a motion to approve the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund, 2014 to 2015 operating budget in the amount of $1,914,200.
Who's your second? Second. Discussion. Just for clarification, Sean, all of the recommended changes that were presented during our budget workshop by Jerry Tonner have been reflected in the amount.
It's reflected in the, is that here?
Oh, good.
Can you just run through those final?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
So just to go through the additional recommendations that the board asked Jerry to provide, which includes the expense reductions, the rate changes, the Apple Barn rentals, the golf course membership card, the facility membership, all of those have been reflected in this budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Questions? And you're comfortable that the budget balances?
It does balance. There's some sort of bottom there. What it shows in our system is... Actually, hold on a second. Actually, I apologize, it's a pretty different number.
Yeah, the one you, 191. So 191.
Yeah, if you give me one second, let me give you the right, sorry about that. It's the correct information in the backup from, from in your budget books, but the wrong number was, was translated. number was, was translated.
And again, we have a whole other week to do this, so we're.
If we get more cookies, I'm in.
Awesome cookies.
Yeah, for the purpose of the motion, I apologize, the wrong cell. The bottom line budget for the Simsbury Farm Special Revenue Fund is $1,877,200. And that's incorporating all the changes that Jerry presented, incorporating his changes from what he presented at the last.
That's a reduction from the $1,914,200 that was originally proposed.
That's right. It's a reduction from, on the expenditure side, it's an increase from the, ultimately was the revenue side from what he originally presented.
Great. So the number on the last page in the packet you gave us is incorrect?
Oh, I see. It's minus the $37,000, basically.
Mine is $37,000.
So if I subtract 37 from 1914?
191.
That's a check.
So what, we just didn't have a copy of the bottom line, the bottom number, we just had, before the 37 was tabulated, so.
Great.
And this is a good thing, because it means they're spending less money.
It is, and I think we challenged the departments in that department to take a look at programs and be creative, and I think that process will continue with the subcommittee, so I'm looking forward to even more ideas. Can I have a motion to approve the Simsbury Farm?
I made a motion, should I rescind?
Yeah, you gotta change the number.
Amen.
I will rescind my motion? I don't believe I have a second.
I think.
I did.
You did, okay.
So why don't you make another motion?
Okay. Let's see if I can get it right this time. I, Michael Payne, make a motion to approve the Simsbury Farm Special Revenue Fund 2014 to 2015 operating budget in the amount of $1,877,200.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item? Did you have to rescind that first one? Yeah, he just withdrew.
Oh, do I have to rescind my second? On the record, I did not do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought you did. You're rescinding the first motion.
Exactly.
That you seconded, okay. I did hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah, she did.
Next item is to approve the capital non-recurring fund budget in the amount of $416,250. This includes an appropriation for the highway and paving management in the amount of $155,184. This is to, to budget for the reimbursement that the town receives from the state, needs to be budgeted somewhere, and this is where we budget. So any questions on the capital non-recurring fund? We didn't make one. No motion on that one. Thanks, Lisa. Is there a motion?
Before we do that, can you, I know, can you just explain to me one more time how the LoSiP grant is included in that?
So in order to receive the grant, the grant has been appropriated.
Okay.
So.
So it's like we're spending it, but then we're getting it back?
Well, the state funds come in, but we need authorization to spend it. So if we didn't, if the Board of Selectmen didn't authorize it, and the taxpayers didn't authorize it, when the money came in, we couldn't spend it.
Right, I just want to make sure it's a net zero, you know.
It's a net zero. If the, if the LoSiP money goes up, then we'll come back to the board to clarify that. If it goes down, we only spend the amount that the.
But that's included in the 416, or that is not?
That's additional.
It's additional. So we have to add those two together to make the?
You would make the motion as it states, separately.
Yeah, you need to make it separately. Yeah, because we don't, you know, we're not, we're not moving any of the revenue items here, we're just moving the expenditure side.
I just wanted to be sure I was clear on that.
And we don't want to authorize a total amount, because if we did that, then whether we got the federal grant, I mean, the state grant, we would be authorizing payment.
Right.
No, but if you did this way, then it's only appropriating the dollars that we get through LoSiP.
Right. Because, yeah, if you lump them together, then we could theoretically spend another $155,000 out of CNR, which is not appropriate.
Right, that's what I was. And the capital non-recurring fund is a chargeback, so that, the funding for that account is funded through the Board of Selectmen budget, whereas the LoSiP grant is not funded through the operating budget, it's funded through a state grant.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be clear on where it was going on that. Do you want to do it, Lisa? I think it's your turn.
Sure. I, Lisa Havner, make a motion to approve the capital non-recurring fund 2014 to, this is wrong, 2014 to 2015 budget in the amount of $416,250 to include an appropriation for the highway paving management in the amount of $155,184 for the LoSiP reimbursement grant.
Great. Do we have a second?
I just ask a quick question.
Yeah.
That doesn't need to say an additional appropriation?
That's what I was wondering.
I would recommend that it say an additional.
Did you get that, Lisa?
Not to be nitpicky, but it implies that it's coming out of the 416.
Yeah, I think that's where the confusion was.
I will accept the friendly amendment to change it to include an additional appropriation for highway paving management.
Okay.
And I'll approve that friendly amendment.
I don't think it's actually needed, but certainly it won't hurt. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that's the simple budget. With authority here in public comment, and working with the Board of Finance. I think it was our priority, we, I think it's important to keep the budgets low, and the Board of Ed budget low this year so that we won't have a tax increase, and hopefully we'll get there. The next item, I would not ask for a motion right now, just for informational purposes. We have a presentation at our Board of Selectmen meeting on the capital improvement plan for the Board of Education. We have not yet received that, so I know we will have that tonight. But I do think that Jeff Shay did have a new packet for us. Do you have a new packet for us for the capital?
I don't have it here, no.
Okay.
We have the new, yeah.
So I think the Board of Ed is still working on their presentation. So the only information we have is the information that the board received, and we've discussed earlier at our workshop on the town's capital plans. What we'll hear tonight is we'll hear from the Board of Ed on their capital plans. I know the Board of Ed has made some changes to the capital plan as we have presented. I don't have a copy of those, and I expect to get that at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And our process, again, under the statute, under the charter, is that the Board of Selectmen must present the capital improvement plan to the Board of Finance by March 31, 2014. So we do have time. We would need to schedule a special meeting to do that, to go finish it tonight, and we would need to inform the Board of Finance that they will also need to meet later than tomorrow night, because they have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. So we do have time, and if we need it, we certainly can take it in order to make the best decisions that we need to make. I think what we'll do at this point, since we do have this on our agenda for our regular meeting, we do have one item left, and that is we do need to meet the Board of Finance's obligation, the requirement that we reduce the budget that we just adopted, so you thought you were done. We do need to reduce that budget to a 0.5 percent, and that means that we do need to reduce the budget that we sent to the Board of Finance by $95,245. I want to thank Sean and Tom for putting together some suggested item adjustments. One item, that was, that's before the board, is an adjustment for Social Security and a reduction in the central administrative advertising line item. So we have already made those, we have to make those adjustments, so those really are something that the board has to do. We have also put together some suggested changes based on the last discussions that we had. And basically, this reversed the clerk for the assessment appeals for $635. It did reduce the salt and drainage road supplies by $40,000. If you recall, we did increase that budget line item by $60,000, so there would still be a net increase in that line item. One of the items that we had recommended for elimination earlier was also leaf collection for $12,000, an increase in the chargeback for fiscal year CNR. I think that was from, remember what that was from?
The police road signs?
Yes, the signs. The next item was the police records clerk. The next item was the add-back to the Department of Public Works custodian driver line item. The next reduction is the increase to Main Street of $5,000. The next was to, the increase to the communications specialist at 2,500. And the last item was the increase to the funding of the marketing plan for $5,000. So we need tonight to adopt a $95,000 reduction in the Board of Selectmen budget in order to send that to the Board of Finance, so I'll open it up for discussion.
So procedurally, are we adopting anything, or are we just getting a consensus?
I think we, we're obligated to adopt a list of cuts and, you know, vote on a list of cuts. I don't think we need to, I don't, I don't think, based on the Board of Finance's discussion, we need to adopt a whole new budget. I think we, we have time to do that, the Board of Finance wants us to do that, after the public hearing. But I do think we need to vote on a list of cuts in order forward to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
Yes.
I won't make comment. As, as the comment was made when we received our cookies of our long and arduous process of the budget, and I think we've done such a great job trying to find the things we felt were very important to add back in, and it has been all tough choices, my suggestion would be not to get a lot of little things impacted, and I don't mean little because they are, you know, line items that are important, but I'd like to see, and it's because I do feel like the Board of Finance will support our 1 percent budget, the reductions made in the Department of Public Works custodial, and the balance being made in salt and roads.
That wouldn't make enough, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be enough, that doesn't reach $95,000.
No, it would be.
Unless you're reducing salt to lower than we budgeted this year, which I would strongly not recommend. We already had a salt shortage this year, we budgeted $60,000 more in our budget, and to take out more than $60,000 and bring it back to lower when it was this year, I would strongly recommend we don't do that.
I think it's, well, then I guess I would say I would lead with the 20 and 60, and then find maybe through leaf collection.
What, 60?
Bringing the salt and roads from 40 to 60, so it wouldn't be an increase for the year.
I think if our Public Works Director was here, I mean, I think he's, would not be happy with taking the $40,000. We're already going to be short. I would not recommend that.
I couldn't support that.
Just to clarify, the stuff in gray are reductions, right?
Correct.
So 40 is already coming out of there.
Correct. I wouldn't recommend lower than, I mean, $40,000.
Is probably too much.
Is already too much, exactly right. I think that to take out more than 60 would be irresponsible, and take out the full 60, I couldn't support.
So Nancy, when you said 60, are you talking about the 40 for salt and the 20 for the cust?
Well, no, I was saying adding more to the salt, but if that is something that folks aren't comfortable with.
So if we've got 60 right there, and we actually need to do, because we've got the 18 up top, right? That's the.
Well, that's already in, correct? Is that what you were saying?
No, you have to.
We gotta do that, it's, that, yeah, we don't, we don't have a choice on that one. So basically, reducing the custodian balances out the 18. So then we've only got 40, 42,000 with salt and road drainage supplies, so that, that doesn't include paving though, right? Paving's a separate line item?
Yes, correct.
So we're going to potentially bond for paving, and we could potentially, we can choose how much paving money we want to use, right?
Well, if you recall, the Board of Finance wants us to put more in operating and less in bonding.
I agree, but they also want us to come up with a 0.5 number for sport.
I'm not comfortable taking it out of operating, I'm not comfortable taking it out of operating basic services, when we have things in here that really, you know, that we don't even have a plan for. I mean, in all fairness, the marketing plan doesn't even have anything in writing. And I think we, in good faith, gave $30,000 to a plan that we don't even have. So to take $5,000 out of that, I think is.
I mean, let's cut the whole EDC budget then, I mean, they don't have a plan, period.
There's no plan to spend the 30. You're taking $5,000 out.
The plan from the 30 was originally part of the $120,000 recommendation from the consultant, so there is a portion to that plan.
That, they're not recommending, they're not recommending using the consultants. We did the marketing plan for consultants, it was a very specific plan. This is not what this is recommended. This is not, that we have no plan for this plan. So taking it down, you know, if Sean wants to take it down to 30, I would support that before I go into roads and paving.
So I can only back up and say what was presented from the very beginning to establish the task force included the goals that encumbered some of those, those items that were within the marketing plan.
Where's that?
So, in the submissions that I gave to the board for establishing the task force?
I didn't, I didn't see any specific goals.
And that was back in December. But I think for the purposes of obviously trying to get to something tonight, and this is, obviously, it's a challenge to do in a short window of time.
We have hope.
Well, and I guess maybe I'm talking about within the next 15 minutes.
We don't have to do it in 15 minutes. If the board needs more time, we can have another meeting before the Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night.
I mean, I'll make one point. Main Street actually does have a plan, they gave us a work, a work plan, and so I don't think that makes sense to reduce them, because they're already $5,000 below, to bring them 20 percent. I'd rather see that come out of the EDC marketing plan, because the truth is, it may take a year to get it, and we can always come back for more money, or if there's an appropriation at the end. It's not a, if you don't have it now, you can never have it. We can certainly do it at some point later, and if we make a compelling case, I'm sure we could even go to the Board of Finance on that. But Main Street actually does have a plan, so I wouldn't like to see that reduced.
I would agree. Yeah, I would agree.
And I do see the, you know, in terms of must spend, should spend, and want to spend, I do see the salt and drainages, we must spend that. That, that is closer to a must spend for me, so I'm really hesitant to reduce that by $40,000. So, one, I think to Sean's point, and two, I think Cheryl's point, I don't think the Board of Finance is going to recommend that we do this, so this is in some way an academic exercise, but, that said, I mean, I, I think to Mary's point, and also to the point that we don't have a plan, it doesn't mean we won't spend it, we'll spend it eventually on the marketing Economic Development Task Force at some point, but in the planning thing, before we have that laid out, why would we spend money there on a want to spend, or, no, maybe it's a should spend, because long-term, yeah, development, when, versus a must spend? So I guess I would.
What would you, what would you propose?
I guess I would, boy.
I would go back to the wish list items we put back in again.
I think these are all the wish lists.
Back from.
These are the wish lists.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would change the salt and road to.
Where we have the central admin part-time, we have.
These are the things that are in?
Well, what we just adopted.
That we just adopted.
Yeah. I don't.
So, yes, we want that in for our communications specialist, but, you know.
I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm coming at this from a little different point. If the Board of Finance wants to play a game with us to just come to 0.5 for the sake of it, their baby is roads, and, you know.
I don't think it's a game. I think our, I think our goal is to not raise taxes. I think it's a very serious goal, and, and, you know, depending on what, what we hear from the public, I think that, you know, we could be adjusting the budgets. So I think it's an important task.
And also, we do have to make a good faith effort to reduce it in a way that prioritizes what we want to spend. And I think they're all valid to spend money on, and I don't want, mean to say that, and I think that there are ways to do it later, but I guess I would, I would not drop the Main Street. I would decrease the economic development by five to cover the Main Street, and I would probably reduce the, that by another 10, and get the salt and road to 30.
So you're going to take $15,000 total out of the?
Leave 15, but that said, I think we can come back to that, and we don't have a plan yet, we don't-
I, I can't support that. You know, I understand, and I would fully support funding Main Street over the $5,000 for the task force and the marketing study. I just, we keep going back to this not having a plan thing, and as I said, it's been outlined in the marketing study, it's been outlined in the bullet points for the goals when the task force was formed. The main purpose of that very talented skill set of people is strategic implementation of some of the things within that marketing plan, and if they, with their expertise, feel that other things that are outside of that marketing plan should be implemented, then those may be as well.
So what are they going to spend 30,000 on that they can't spend 20? What's the, what are we getting, what are we buying for 10,000 more?
Well, we're talking about 25 right now, right? Is that what we're talking about?
What are we buying for 30,000?
The economic development expansion and retention plan, the marketing pieces, including video.
No, the video's separate, that doesn't include the video. The 30,000 doesn't include the video.
The video for tourism was going to be collectively worked together with other medias that were going to be worked on by the marketing plan.
But to get to Lisa's point, if you reduce that line item from 30 to 20, what are we giving up?
We can go and look back to the marketing plan and the bullets outlined with that task force, and there's a lot of, they were going to look at the role of an economic development coordinator, coordinator and analysis of the various tasks that are being performed right now. They were going to benchmark the economic development tools that we have.
But that doesn't cost money, that doesn't cost money to do, that's something they're doing, but I guess to Lisa's point, I mean, we know, you know, we know that we need 60,000 more for salt, we're reducing it by 20 in order to compromise and add some back, the question is, what, what are we losing? We know we're losing by reducing the salt item, but what are we reducing by the marketing plan? And not to pick on the marketing plan, but I mean, that's the only item on here that's not an annual operating expense.
No, correct, it's not, and I think that we've all made an effort to try to heighten our approach to economic development, and the, again, I go back to the sole reason for creating that group was to take what we had for monies and get a much better return on our investment, because we have folks who strategically can implement a lot of the things that we want to do within that plan and beyond. An economic development retention expansion plan alone could cost $50,000.
Yeah, but that's not what-
So, not to belabor, but I don't think anyone's against it. I think what we're saying is, right now, we don't know what the money's being used for. We don't have any, any outline of what the money's going to be used for, so that was the purpose of the-
And it's not the end of the day, I think at the end of the day, it's not the end of the day, we can go back and fund it later, but in terms of this, I mean, I don't know. It's, like I say, it's sort of academic that we're having this discussion at all. But, but I do put slight, I do put a must spend on salt and road, and a should spend in the marketing plan, and the, in fairness, the communications specialist, that's why those are should spends, so I put Main Street as a should spend, I put the leaf collection probably as a must spend, I put the police records clerk funded to hire, that goes to keeping track of, as I think as the chief described, those who abuse their spouses, so that's probably a must spend.
The problem is that we all have no problem adding back the money, you know, that's, that's the easy part, right? There's a lot of really great, you know, initiatives, there's a lot of really great services we want to offer to our residents. I don't think anyone's jumping up and down, ready to vote for cutting reductions, and those are tough choices. This is a suggestion, you can throw it out, and you can start all over again, but, you know, I think that in order to get a consensus, I think, I think it's going to be very difficult for us to all reach a consensus on, on eliminating some of these important things. I think this, this line item really hits everybody's wish list fairly, in fairness, you know, I mean, some, some folks feel that roads should be funded at 60,000, this doesn't do that. That actually takes a $40,000 hit in the line item that some of us think is the most important line item on this whole list. Yes, it doesn't fund the marketing study completely, yes, it doesn't fund other things completely, but, you know, I think, I think it's probably the most fair list that we're probably going to be, come up with, even if we were here all night. So I think we should start with this list, and then I'd entertain changes to the list.
We have consent, one consensus, switching, not doing the Main Street and reducing the marketing study to 25, so if we made just that one change.
Is there a consensus for that change?
I thought there was.
Not doing Main Street.
Reduction to 40.
Taking Main Street out of that as a reduction.
Eliminating that as a reduction, and add 10,000 to the EDC marketing plan reduction, so it's-
Well, no, I think Lisa said that at 5 at this point, because there isn't consensus to cut that further.
We didn't have consensus to go below 25.
Well, then we're over.
No, if we reduce Main Street, we were taking Main Street from 45 to 40. This one, we're leaving Main Street at 45, and we're taking an extra 5 out of the marketing study, so to 20, I guess.
That's what I just said.
Oh, sorry.
And Nancy said no, she wouldn't support that. So there's no consensus.
Do we not have consensus? I thought, I thought we did.
It only takes four of us to have an approval, so.
Yeah, do whatever you want. That's one suggestion, and it wasn't, there wasn't consensus, so I'll entertain another suggestion.
We can go at this 60 different ways, as suggested, Mary, I mean, we could say, all right, we're not going to do capital next year. I mean, we could, you know, we do this soon.
Correct, you can.
So, all right, we're not going to have, you know, 95,000 charged back to pay for bonds, and that could be one thing, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, what, I think what-
We can move the roads out.
What this list was attempted to do is take a fair look at what we could live with without harming the, the operating budget. Not everybody's happy here tonight?
So maybe then the idea is-
And that's the most fair.
I'm sorry, I interrupted. Maybe the idea is then just to leave this as is. If it is that this was a suggestion, we're not sure we're even going forward with this, it is what it is at this point, if we've got to come back and we've got to finalize this, at another point, if the Board of Finance actually does say, geez, we've got to do this, then we go at it at that time.
Well, fairness, I think that, I think that's not correct. I think that we have to be comfortable that this is the list, because this will be the list that goes to public hearing. So if you're not happy with this list, then I think you have to make changes.
So talk to me about the process again, because we're going to send two lists and two budgets essentially to a public hearing?
I don't know what the Board of Finance will do. They've asked us, I went back, as I said I would, to the Board of Finance and said, here's where we are, we're a very conservative budget, there's, you know, the question is, do you want to see further reductions? And the answer was yes.
So they actually want to see line item reductions?
Yes.
Actually, my understanding from last week, and Sean, Joe, correct me, they asked us to show them what a 5 percent increase in the budget would look like.
Decrease.
Or decrease, I'm sorry.
Increase would be easy.
I was so close.
We can do that.
I had support, we had consensus. But in concept, and frankly, I really have a problem gutting the budget when we, I think we've done a really good job with the budget, but we've been asked by the Board of Finance to show them what it would look like.
That's right, we did.
I don't think we necessarily have to have consensus, other than, here it is, we don't like this, but here it is.
Well, in fairness, I'm not taking back anything that the Board doesn't support. I don't think that's fair to the Board of Finance. If there's not a consensus of this board to send that to Board of Finance, then I don't, I mean, what is, who's going to represent what it is? Is it, it's not mine, it's not yours, I mean, I, you have to have a consensus to send it to the Board.
Mary, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't support any of this, and if the Board of Finance has a problem with that, then I'm sorry, but, I mean, I'm not going to vote to support any of these reductions, so, I mean, I think we get the-
Then I guess we need a motion to say to the Board of Finance, we're not sending you a point-
That's just, that's just my opinion.
Well, that's an option, and I, I'm reacting, I'm not saying I agree, I just said, my job tonight is to get a 5 percent reduction and bring it back to the Board of Finance. If this board chooses not to do that, I'll report that. Personally, you know, I think we have an obligation, I think this list is, as much as we don't like everything on it, is a fair assumption of the impact it has to the Board of Selectmen. I'm comfortable supporting this and sending it to the Board of Finance. But if the Board wants to vote differently, make changes, not send anything, you're, you know, feel free to do any of those, any of the above.
I think we have to do it, I really do. I'm, you know, I know we don't like it, but-
It's not fun.
No, it's not fun, but, you know, I've sat in enough other board meetings to know that it's not fun for anybody, and to make the Board of Ed go through this process of putting teachers on the line and other people's jobs on the line, and for us to sit here and say, no, we don't want to do that because it's too hard, I, I think is not fair to them.
Say it was too hard.
Well, because we don't like-
Didn't say it was too hard.
I know, you didn't say it's too hard, but it's-
It's an academic exercise to rile up town staff for no reason.
But that, in fairness, I think Cheryl's point-
But everybody, all the other people had to do it also.
The Board of Finance made the same argument, the Board of Ed made the same argument to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance says, we're sorry, but we want to see the list.
And I, I think we have to do it, because if, you know, we're going to have some mutual respect between the three boards here, we have to, to play our part too, and I, I don't think we can brush that off.
So, options, so this is an option, I'll take further amendments to this list, I'll take motions to do nothing, I'll take motions to, to change it, whatever is the Board's desire.
All right, so can I toss out a different scenario? Would you put roads and salt at 45 in order to fund Main Street at 5 and leave the marketing study at what would be 25 as opposed to 30?
The 40,000 is a reduction, right?
It would be a $15,000 increase in what was last year's net.
Could you explain that?
So last year, it was 300,000, it was $60,000 less than where it currently is last year.
When you put that 40 there, it means it's-
This was your wish list item, right? So this was $40,000 add-back to, well, yeah, 40, it was $60,000 add-back to $40,000 on top of the $10,000.
Right, to fund it. So this would be a further reduction to road.
Salt and drainage. What is the salt funding at? Is the 40,000, is that a reduction to what's there, or is that what would be left? That's the reduction.
That's the reduction to what was proposed, but using last year's number is not a good number, last year's number was cut drastically during the budget process.
So it's a 40,000 reduction to what we have in there right now, is that right? And what percent reduction?
To the budget you just passed.
To the increase.
Have in there right now, from where your consensus budget is?
From the budget we just passed, it's in there.
That would be a 40,000.
These are all reductions to that.
And what percent reduction to the salt budget is that?
To the sub percent?
Yeah.
To, to the FY '14 salt budget, or to the salt budget as proposed?
No, to the one we have, the one we just passed.
Fiscal year budget.
14, 15 budget.
12 percent.
Recommended, requested. Let's see, changes.
Tom, off the top of your head?
12 and a half, put out this.
Sean just wants to be right. Wait a minute, 13.33.
13.3, I'm sorry.
Just in case you're wondering.
So, so do we want to make a further reduction?
No, I don't. The question is, do we want to reduce that reduction? That's the only thing I would support. I would not support making a further reduction.
Right. Would you take it out of the communications specialist?
Yeah.
That's what she wants to do.
Yeah.
I mean, we took 2,500, we've got 7,000, I mean, look, I would take it, I mean, I-
I don't think that gets, that doesn't get you anything.
Doesn't get you anything.
You need, you would need 5,000, taking out the communications specialist doesn't give you 5,000 unless you want to reduce it to less than part-time.
I thought the communications specialist had money from another source.
It's, it's 15,000 plus the different mine.
That makes it part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. I was thinking that was-
Yeah, no, you'd be reducing it to below part-time.
So, do these, these assumptions don't include the 18,000 reduction from landfill?
No.
It doesn't include the 7,000 from child services?
It can't, that's in our operating budget. Can't double-
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're